I would like to introduce the United States of America and as we the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Adoption of agenda for regular meeting. Under provisions of the Public Meetings Law of the State of Missouri, the Board must adopt by roll call vote an agenda that includes a time, date, place, and tentative agenda for the meeting. A copy of the notice and the agenda for this meeting was posted on Monday, July 7, 2014, at the Administration Center 1005 Waterford Drive, Florissant, Missouri. At the same time, copies of the notice and agenda were mailed to major radio and television stations, to four newspapers, to all municipalities, schools in the district, and posted on the district website. Do I have a motion to...
Second.
Motion made by Ms. Huxton, second by Mr. Eber. Mr. Morris, when you're ready, please call.
I am ready.
Mr. Eber?
Aye.
Mr. Brown?
Aye.
Mr. Schrader?
Aye.
Mr. Thurman?
Aye.
Secretary Wutzke?
Aye.
Ms. Huxton?
Aye.
And Ms. Preston?
Aye.
Adoption of agenda for closed meeting. Section 610.021 of Missouri law provides for discussion of certain agenda items in a closed meeting. Notice of proposed closed meeting, including the agenda item to be discussed, was posted. The Board by roll call vote must authorize holding the closed meeting and approve the proposed agenda by reference to each subject to be discussed. The agenda for this closed meeting is legal, section 610.021.1, and personnel, section 610.021.3. Do I have a motion to accept the agenda?
Second.
And, Mr. Eber?
Aye.
Mr. Brown?
Aye.
Mr. Schrader?
Aye.
Mr. Thurman?
Aye.
Secretary Wutzke?
Aye.
And Ms. Preston?
Aye.
This portion of the meeting is open for the Board update. This portion of the meeting is allocated for the Board to provide an update of current activities and events in the district that may be of special interest to Board members and the meeting. First up, Paul, sorry, Mr. Eber, since he's down. You know they have...
They always do that. But you always start with him, like, "Mr. S..." You want to lead off? No? Okay. No? Well, I've been at different meetings, I don't know, there we go, different meetings on the PropS, and we really need to get behind this PropS. It's all about the kids. And, you know, how do I even articulate? We've cut it to the bone. There's nothing left to cut. And it's going to be hurtful, very, very hurtful. We will not, for me, I can speak for me, and I thank the Board, we will not go out of business. You know, so there will be drastic things that will happen if this does not pass, and I really have sat already at the things that have hurt kids because of the finances, and, you know, some that were out of our control and some that were in our control over the years. But I'm really asking for everybody's support for the PropS, because, like I said, ultimately it's about the kids. So, thanks.
Well, we did have a 4th of July parade in person, which was well-attended, and I want to thank Janet for carrying the PropS banner. We have meetings that have been on the PropS. Laura, Janet did a wonderful job on it. Not well-attended, and so we worked very hard to get the message out. As Mr. Eber said, we have cut to the bone. And I am convinced that this Board will react in the manner in which the public votes. And we will do what is necessary to maintain the financial stability of this district. I believe that this Board, and last year's Board, and the one that you guys, when you initially made those initial cuts, is doing what they can and doing the appropriate thing. And we'll continue, because we're going to be good stewards of the money and the people. I'm going to also encourage people to go out and vote. And the Board is prepared to respond to that vote. And I just want to encourage the teachers to show up. I think it's very important that their faces are out there, and I'm looking forward to seeing that. Thank you.
I also attended the public forum a week ago Tuesday and yesterday morning in breakfast. I want to congratulate Janet and Laura particularly for taking a complex thing like district finances and making it understandable to even me. And the numbers are kind of blinding. It's hard for people to believe that when we ended up with balances of $1.75 billion last fall, that we had to go borrow money. But that's the reality when it takes 10, $11 million a month to run this district. Those are real numbers, and that's something that's hard to get away from. And my hats off to making it understandable. Your presentations get better every time I hear them. And it's something that I hope the voters will take with them when they go to the polls, and not just vote on emotion, but vote on facts and real numbers.
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
I too had the opportunity to attend several meetings on PropS, especially the practice with the community leaders, which was very interesting. And it's very, the PropS is really supported by our community leaders, so it's important for them to get that information. So I too want to thank Laura and Janet for the work that they do and how they make it so plain for all of us to understand what's going on. Attended the town hall meeting, and again, information's out there. Unfortunately, we didn't have a lot of people come out to hear the information, so, you know, we're just hoping that we can get the word out and that more people will come out and get more information or understand what's going on, why we need PropS and why it's so important to our district. Also, attended a steering committee meeting on PropS. So guess what we've been doing? A lot of PropS-ing, making sure that we, too, as Board members, understand what's going on, and so that we can also be intelligent enough to speak on PropS and why it's important to the district. I had an opportunity also to visit the Life Care Center in Florissant. If you've not gone there, Arthur Williams invited me to come and took me on a tour, and it is magnificent. It's like a five-star hotel. And it's something that is beautiful in our school district, and it is a gym. So if you get an opportunity, please go and tour the place, see what you have to offer here in Florissant. And also, he wants to get a partnership going with the district. And there are a lot of different things that he's wanting to do, and I was so excited to talk with him and to hear some of the things that he can offer us. So we will be talking some more. And Laura, he wants to get on the foundation.
Great.
So please get in touch with Arthur, the Arthur's senior leader. So, thank you so much.
Well, guess what I get to talk about? PropS. We have been working hard. There's a lot of stuff going on, and there's going to be a lot more that will come here very shortly. We had a meeting last week with several of the stakeholders to work on PropS. Guard signs will be popping up like daisies on July 19th, that's a Saturday. So if you feel like volunteering for putting out guard signs, we'll meet probably here, but we'll figure out where we're going to meet. They are on order, they will be here, they'll be put out a full three weeks before the campaign, before the election. Also, going to do some walks. We're going to do a walk on the 26th and on the 2nd, two Saturdays prior to the election, so that we can divide that up. We're going to target registered voters. We're not going to go to every house. We need to go to the houses of people who can vote. I saw some very disturbing, for me, disturbing figures. We have 11,000 students in this district. Of those 11,000 students, 6,800 of their parents are registered voters. Of those, or, excuse me, there's 6,800 parents of the 11,000 students. Of those 6,800, only 3,300 of them are registered voters. Of the 3,300, only 425 vote 50% of the time or more. That is a disturbing figure. And so, we need to get out, getting the message out to our parents is great, but it's not going to win the election. It's not going to help our students. We need to get out to the general public, and that's what we're going to do. And that's why we're going to knock on registered doors, not just every door. Not just going to walk down the street and throw paper at it. We have to have an organized group that's going to knock on the door and explain why it's important to this community that we pass PropS. So if you'd like to volunteer for that, that would be great. Let me know, or let anybody on the Board know. The email address for the committee is strongschoolscommittee@gmail.com. If you would email that, I'll be back and get back with you. Phone banking. We're going to do phone banking the week of the 28th, the week prior to the election. So we'll be setting up phone banks and need people to work that as well. Poll workers. Day of the election, we need poll workers. We need people to be at the polls. Bring your kids, bring everybody. We need lots of people. I would like to have at least one adult and one child at every poll for 13 hours that day. We have 37 polls to cover, so it's not a small task. I need your help. Depending on the money, I'd like to do at least one to two mailings to get out the vote for PropS. And again, they'll target registered voters, high percentage, regular voters, not just everybody. Need to spend our money and spend it wisely. Spend it on the people who will actually vote, not on the people who don't. Speaking of that money, if you'd like to donate to PropS, it is Strong Schools PAC. And Mr. Thomas, Rance Thomas, is the Deputy Treasurer. He's not here tonight, but if you'd like to write a check sometime, you can send it to me, or you can send it to Rance, or you can drop it by here, and they'll see that it gets put in the correct place. So that's what I have to say about PropS. We have been working hard. We are doing lots of things, and we will endure and pass this election, because this election is, as an old friend of mine said, the next election is the most important election of your life. And that, for us, this one certainly is.
Paul, could you explain about how the money, if we would pass it, would we use it? If it goes any longer, it's like we have to wait a year or something like that?
Oh.
What is that cycle?
The reason that the August election is important is that if we pass the levy in August, when we do our tax rate meeting, we can use that amount to set the levy for the upcoming year, starting January 1st. If we don't pass it in August, we have to wait another year in order to do that. So it is critical that we pass it this August. Even if we did it again in November, it wouldn't make any difference. The tax rate is already set prior to that, so we couldn't use it for that year. So it's absolutely critical that we pass it this year. Thank you.
Well, as you know, we're into July, and this is the beginning of the new fiscal year, plus the beginning of the new school year. And on July 4th, you could see the community involvement and see how much the community was behind the school district. Everybody that, as we went past the parade, you know, they were just very enthusiastic about Ferguson, Florissant. So with that excitement, we just need to roller coaster on the back of that and move forward to have a great school year.
Hey, again, I was involved with the PropS, a lot of meetings, things going on. But if you're still not sure how you're leaning towards PropS, there's a lot of valuable information out of the website. Please access it. If you're opposed to PropS, I encourage you to reach out to the district. We'll be happy to set a representative out to speak with your group. What we want is to make sure everybody's our informed voters, so that way they're, as someone said earlier, making a vote based upon information and not just emotion. Wonderful 4th of July parade in person. I typically don't like parades, but that was a lot of fun. And it was such a good turnout. The weather was great. The enthusiasm was fantastic. We had the pleasure of being behind the McClure High School Archie van, so that was fantastic as well. I apologize I couldn't make it to the last month's meeting, or at least for the Board meeting. I did Skype in on two other meetings while I was on the beach in South Carolina, had to throw that out there.
Yeah.
But, you know, they got to see the big head in the sky, we got to call it, but it worked really well, and I enjoyed using that technology. And thank you to everybody that was involved to pull that off. That's all I have.
Mr. Schubert?
Yes.
Can I say one more thing?
Absolutely.
Not only has we've been working on all these other things, we've also been working on support groups throughout the community. Ferguson, Florissant NDA has supported us, PropS, Greater North County Chamber of Commerce is supporting PropS, North County Labor is supporting PropS, and hopefully tomorrow morning, North County Inc. will be supporting PropS. I talked to them today. So we are getting people behind us, large groups. The Mayor of Florissant is behind it. He's brought Johnny Landoff on board with it, trying to gain their support. Has none so. So, a lot of things going on right now, so.
All right. Next up is Frank Greig, DDA, but I don't see him in the floor.
Yeah, quickly, as Mr. Morris just said, just to let everybody know, that the employee groups that the FFNDA does represent did overwhelmingly vote to support PropS, and hopefully our leadership is meeting with your leadership, and we can lend our support hopefully in some physical ways or whatever, some tangible ways in the upcoming months. So, keep in touch.
Thank you. Mr. LaRue?
Thank you. I'd like to begin by recognizing some new administrators to the Ferguson, Florissant School District. If we could begin with Jane Crawford. Could you come up, please? Jane is the new principal for McClure High School. Jane Crawford has been approved by the Board of Education as principal of McClure High School. Most recently, Jane Crawford has served as assistant principal at McClure High School and was previously the school's dean of students. Ms. Crawford has served at the Ferguson, Florissant School District for 21 years as administrator and as a teacher. She holds an educational specialist degree, an educational leadership from Sandhurst University, and a master's degree in education from Truman State University. Welcome.
Thank you.
Jane, I think you'd like to say...
Oh, gosh. I know, I got halfway to my seat. I'm very excited. I am having a really, really good time. I told Larry yesterday in the office, he asked me how I felt, how I was doing, and I said, "I feel really alive right now." And so, we have a lot of positive things going on at McClure and have had for the last several years, and I want to keep that momentum going, and I want to use that momentum to make the improvement that we need in our student achievement. And I'm really hoping that I can get everybody moving in the same direction and achieving those goals. And so, thank you very much for this opportunity. I really appreciate it. Oh, sure. My husband, Chris, is wearing the teal golf shirt. Kaitlyn is my daughter, and she is going to be a seventh grader. And Nathan is my son, and he's going to be a eighth grader. Yay.
The second person I would like to introduce is Sue Reno. Sue? Sue is going to be our Director of Finance. She's been through by the Board for this position. She most recently served for 11 years as the supervisor of finance for the Rockwood School District. She worked previously as the district accountant and office manager in Hartsfield School District. Ms. Reno holds a bachelor's degree in business administration with an emphasis in accounting from Columbia College. Welcome.
First being new to the district, I'm hoping naturally that the PropS does pass, and it sounds like I will be on board to help at the end. I wish I could have been more help at the beginning, but I've been on the other side helping over there. But I'm going to be really happy to work here. I know there's a lot to do. I feel I can add a lot. And let's pass that PropS.
And finally, Dr. Talvin McMillan is our Assistant Superintendent for Human Resources. Dr. McMillan has been approved for this position. He has extensive leadership experience in human resources and in education, most recently serving as Assistant Superintendent of Human Resources in the Rockwood School District since 2004. He holds a doctorate in administration, curriculum, and instruction from the University of Nebraska at Lincoln, a master's degree in secondary school supervision and administration from Southeast Missouri State University, and a bachelor's degree in education from Southeast Missouri State University. If you'd like to say...
Thank you for giving me this opportunity, this opportunity, and I'm looking forward to doing good things for you and for your children. I'm a head defender for three days already, have met some wonderful people, and we've been hiring great teachers already, making sure we're everything in place for the beginning of the school year. So, you've given me this chance, looking forward to it.
Thank you. Some calendar items. We will have the back-to-school event scheduled for Saturday, August 2nd, back up on the field between McClure North and Harper Road. We'll have information coming out for that before too much longer, that date, August We have graduation for summer graduates at the next Board meeting, the August 13th date. That will be at 6:00 p.m., I believe. Is that correct?
Yes.
We're already looking at orientation for staff. Orientation will begin on August 7th, and I know that there's plenty of professional development opportunities that are occurring this summer. Is that correct? And then they, as I said, first day of school is already the 14th. So we have a lot to do in a short period of time. There's been much going on, and we're going to add. We don't typically do recognitions during the summer, but we would like to share one in particular, and that's through the Network for Teaching Entrepreneurship. There was a student from McClure South Berkeley, Jordan Harden, that was the top winner, first place in the 2014 St. Louis Regional Youth Entrepreneurship Challenge. He now has a chance to participate, for a chance to win $25,000 in Silicon Valley on October 9th. So I don't know if Dr. Mohammed is here, but Dr. Mohammed's great with our students at McClure South Berkeley. We're looking forward to this opportunity for Jordan.
Can I say something to that?
Yes, please.
So my understanding is that what he created was, he's calling them Neo-students, but they're magnetic shoestrays. So I'm, of course, excited to learn more about his product, but that's what he created, that won him first place in the Fizz Camp.
We will have the opportunity to invite him to participate or to share with us at a future Board meeting, because it sounds like it's quite an opportunity.
What am I, former students?
Is that right?
The Board allocates this portion of the meeting for audience participation regarding items listed on this evening's agenda. Members of the audience who wish to speak to the Board are requested to speak from the podium, identify themselves, and to limit the remarks to three minutes. In keeping with District Policies 4054, 4059, and Personnel Law, speakers should refrain from making negative comments that are personally identifiable. According to policy, the Board will not respond to public comments. Time is also allocated at the end of the public session for suggestions and/or questions from the audience on other subjects not on tonight's agenda. Please identify the agenda item, 6 through 20, that will be addressed. Do we have anybody that wishes to address the Board? CNN? The administration presents the consent agenda. Do we have a motion to accept the consent? Oh, I'm sorry, I'm for discersments, I'm sorry. Mr. Secretary, please read the discersments.
Must be July. Operational disbursements, $1,891,818.57, for a total of $4,65,794.65.
Do I have a motion to accept the consent agenda?
Aye.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Consent agenda? All right, Star Math Reading and Early Literacy. Dr. Dix?
I do want to start saying I'm a central of that four items here, and he tied on this inch code to how we assess students and monitor their progress, and he said they could help us to come through in what is, I would like to say, an expected in a very progress on our state test. So I was part of the number seven, the Star of Math Reading and Early Literacy, which are computer adaptive assessments that the district uses to mix up and progress, monitor our students throughout the school year, as I stated. The assessment has been aligned to both the Missouri Morning Standards as well as the Common Course Day Standards. So it allows teachers to diagnose students' needs and provide support for individualized instruction. All of the district builders have used these programs for the past three years. All of the district buildings have used these programs for the past three years. And the cost of these programs is $99,999.87. Who wants to accept the program?
Second. Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor of renewing the contract for the Star Math Reading and Early Literacy? Say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign?
Accelerated Reader. It's a computer-based reading intervention program that allows students to read books at their current level and assess them on their reading comprehension and vocabulary ability skills. AR is currently used in 17 of the district buildings. And the intervention program can assess students' reading levels. This program costs $24,799.67. Who wants to accept the program?
Second. Any discussion?
I do have this going.
We actually use an accelerated reader. I do have a report that indicates that our schools that have accelerated reader... Now, first I want to tell you that Berkeley Middle School increased 56% in their use of the program, which was also for accelerated reader for Berkeley Middle School, over last year. Last year was at 44, and this year, 100% usage for Berkeley Middle. The other schools that showed increases was J.W. Johnson Law Bash, Lee Hamilton, and Law &amp; Growth. So, I would like to see an increase of usage in the other schools, because we know that when kids read more, they do better. So, those numbers for other schools, we could increase this like one thing. And it's operated now, just coming out, making sure that it all.
The increase in the usage, is that just a building-level decision, or is it student-driven? How did you increase those numbers in those schools?
The increase is a percent above 85%.
Well, what drove it? Because you said there are some schools who have greater increases than others, and others that have not seen those increases. I mean, they've been utilized on the same level across the same buildings?
So, it would be the individual staff. It would be teacher-driven, administrative-driven, that gets those students. And they say, "Because they are time, they do, it's like, let's be on computer." So, it's an adult behavior.
Okay, thank you.
So, if the adults are not using it, if they're not using it in schools, do you take it out? Or are you trying to encourage them to use it more? How are you going to be more accountable in terms of using the number of people?
Before coming to the Board, we contacted each building principal about program evaluation usage and moving forward. And that was the statement. We can no longer continue to buy the programs if we don't see significant use and results by having the program. We don't have that type of money for them. So, we did have those hard conversations at the elementary.
So, the expectation is that at every school, the certain schools that you have to rule with?
And the percentage above 85% increase at each school. And that program evaluation went out, I mean, I spoke with, I know Adrian's not here. You spoke with me during your schools. Eric Winkle sent that out for the funding for title programs. I don't believe that. For example, Law &amp; Growth is one of the schools that, I know we're not at accelerated math. They have, Law &amp; Growth uses focus funds for their accelerated math. And Bermuda and Commsign, they're using local accelerated math. But we do use local funds and Title I funds for accelerated reader. But you're exactly right. It's really making sure that we increase the usage and get more kids reading.
Just to add, we do have some of the buildings that we're using it in, we're having usage that are not getting at this time. We have a number of buildings that are not getting, just kind of big batteries.
And I'll speak a little bit later about my non-reader, doesn't make impact with reasons why they may not be using accelerated reader as much as they should have.
Is there any more discussion? All in favor of renewing the Star Enterprise Accelerated Reader? Say aye.
Aye.
All opposing, same sign? Star Enterprise Accelerated Math?
Accelerated Math is a computer-based math intervention program that the district uses to help improve math students' achievement. This program is currently being used in 10 of our buildings, and it's the main resource for the district in math intervention courses. The program differentiates math instruction by addressing each student's individual needs. The cost of this program is $15,549.54.
Second. Discussion? What did he say?
He seconded that.
Yes, I was just asking if there's any discussion on the topic.
Which schools are utilizing it?
For accelerated math, Bermuda, Commsign, we have with Law &amp; Growth, and I believe. All six secondary schools use it. At the middle school, it's their A-Lab that they have, so the kids enroll in their math class. And then they're placed in A-Lab based on their Star Math scores. And so, AM is used to support the A-Lab. And the same thing at the high school, we have an National Energy Class as an elective math class to support kids that are needing extra support in their math skills. And so, AM is used for that elective math class. Again, kids are placed in there based on their Star Math scores. All six secondary schools use it.
And another thing about these secondary levels is it's kind of difficult to track, because the students are not here long in accelerated math.
Right, they move in and out based on their Star score, somewhere in all year, it might be a semester.
So, it's kind of difficult to say this is the goal for, or how you use in their reports.
But the teachers that use it, I mean, they have some good gains in their student Star scores. Is he kind of shaking his head?
It's a good thing to focus on the kids that we need, rather than a blanket. It sounds like at the secondary, the kids that are needing the extra help is who we're focusing on.
Right, and what it does, it works, I haven't infiltrated correctly, wrong, but it's very skill-specific based on individual kid. So, it's a way to individualize what kids need based on their areas of weakness.
So, just to add, we actually, for the objectives, we look at their current grade level objectives, as well as skills that they need to work on, so it's a two-tiered system.
Any other discussion? Hearing none? All in favor of the Star Enterprise Accelerated Math Renewal? Say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign? Hearing none? Aye, seven. Reflex Math?
Reflex Math is an adaptive and individualized computer program that nine of our district schools use for math intervention to help our students master their math at the literacy. Teachers can monitor students' progress through reports to better help support students' needs. The cost of this program is $21,564, and is funded by Title I and Focus Funds. I will share also that two of our schools, Duchesne and Hall's Area, are using their focus funds, and seven schools are using Title I. Who wants to accept the program?
Second. Any discussion? Hearing none? All in favor of renewing the Reflex Math? Say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say same sign? Hearing none? Aye, seven. Myon Reader?
Myon Readers are created to provide a personalized literacy environment that engages students at all levels with the largest enhanced library of digital books for reading support customized to experience individual interest and reading level. It provides reading assessment that measures and forecasts students' individual student growth. The cost is $79,700, and will be funded by Title I and Focus Funds. I was just saying.
Second. Leslie made the motion, and he seconded. All right, discussion?
Look, the Myon. I've twice seen a presentation on the Myon. It is impressive. It is just impressive. I'm trying to recall her name, it's something, Jeanie?
Crystal.
Not Crystal, it'd be. She know.
The reading specialist.
Patty. The statistics and improvement on the program is phenomenal. And Mr. Chabot, Mr. Morris, and I linked the second time. And it is a wonderful program. I'd just like to see the reason.
Crystal, Isaac McPence, the principal at Central, just had a celebration for her students. And that celebration, probably, for her school students, read 14,894 books, at the top condition, the Myon. The second highest number of books for her under Myon Reader was from Airport, which was 1,706 books. And third place was Lee Hampton, 11,707 books.
Any other questions, discussion? Hearing none? All in favor of renewing the Myon Reader? Say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign? Hearing none?
Aye, seven.
Thank you. Professional Development Committee update. Kevin?
The first thing I'm going to show, video.
Professional Development Committee is a district-wide committee. It's a very unique committee, one in which is mandated by the Senate of Missouri, where all of the professionals in the district receive professional training in their area of expertise. It's a learning community for the teachers, where they can get involved with development to enhance their teaching techniques and their skills.
We have an elementary subcommittee, a secondary subcommittee, which looks at basically the three full-day professional development days throughout the district, and then the six half-day professional development days throughout the districts. And looks at providing that focus for those professional development days. We also have a committee that is the Summer Academy Committee. And that committee is comprised of the PDC committee members that look at what training needs to take place over the summer.
The PDC is one in which there is a representative from each of the 17 elementary schools, as well as the middle schools and the secondary and the high schools. There's two representatives from the high school and the middle schools. And we meet once a month, and the committee designs and devises different types of professional development that the teachers will attend on the professional development day. And what happens is that a variety of ideas come across. We select the ones that are most pertinent and relevant for each of the buildings, so that everyone is getting the same type of training. For instance, this year, our focus is on Common Core and our Communication Arts classes. And technology is definitely district-wide. Throughout the entire district, we have to get technological change for everyone. So, that's when we come together and decide on what needs to be for all of our teachers. And the students, they see that the teachers are engaging them and allow rigor and relevance in their classrooms. That's what the students see. They actually see some of the same type of style of teaching, because we give the development to the teachers, where they learn about differentiated instructions, different types of strategies, the horizontal strategies. And so, what students actually see is that the teachers in the districts are actually teaching the same way. They begin to see that we all have the same style of teaching, because we've all had the same type of training. Well, for the staff, they receive the training in the different types of upcoming different strategies that are available to us. So, all of the staff members receive this training. And what they see, what the actual staff members see, is the implementation of this training in their classrooms. And many of the teachers are doing the same thing.
The state does mandate that we do have a Professional Development Committee, and we have representation throughout the district. And one of the responsibilities of the Professional Development Committee is to make sure that the funds that are allocated for the professional development throughout the district are spent wisely.
If someone was interested about the professional development, and you know what? I get the question now, because a lot of parents are wondering, why is it that the teachers are out of half of the day? And I get that. And the reason why we're out those half of days is so that the teachers can stay up and stay informed of all of the things that are taking place. Professional development is one step beyond what we do. It is a way in which we can all learn how to teach our students. The student is changing, so technology is changing, so our classroom is changing. So, we have to receive that development. What we have, what the community has to remember is that the teachers have gone to school for four years and gotten their degrees and things like that, and we've learned how to teach. Now, the strategies is what we focus in on. Even though we have the knowledge of the information, we all need those different strategies, because none of our students are the same. So, what professional development does is give the teachers a toolbox of information of how to disseminate their information to their students. But we are able to learn about their learning styles and be able to teach to everybody. I am the chairperson for the district-wide professional development. It is a miniscule role, realistically, because we work together. I think one of the biggest roles in my job and description is that I make sure that we actually follow the district professional development mandates. I try to empower the teachers to remind them that, as a Professional Development Committee member, we have to make sure that the information that we do on these professional development days that are set aside for the teachers, is that it is the needs of the teachers. And make sure that we assess the needs of the teachers, and that we respond to those needs of the teachers. So, we send out a survey, twice a year to find out specifically what it is that they know that they need development on. And then I make sure, I try to make sure that we respond to those needs. So, if the teachers say that we need to have more information about a specific strategy, we do the research on it, and then we try and bring it to them.
So, this year, the district Professional Development Committee has accomplished much. The HAD report summarizes that work, it was worth that, but it paid attention enough. Our HAD report includes a continued development of professional learning program for teachers, and that was both spring and summer, our professional learning programs that we had this year. We added a spring one as well. And new teacher orientation and training. Further alignment of the work of PDC to support district strategic and comprehensive school improvement plans. Increased cohesion and teacher representation within the committee. And more collaboration with the administrators as well. The PDC committee is comprised of teachers from each building, and PNA representative, principal representatives from each level, and a board member, Mr. Scherer. We, the committee, met four full days this year. However, we did meet several other times with our subcommittees as well. The work of the PDC is directed by local, state, and federal departments, and the cost for the 2014-15 school year is $360,302. And it's funded by local and state federal agencies.
Who wants to accept the report?
Senator. Any discussion on the PDC update? Hearing none? All in favor? Say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign? Hearing none? Aye, seven. Graduation 2015.
The creation has been provided to the Board for consideration of holding the 2015 graduate
the 2015 graduation ceremonies off campus. The administration recognized the graduation held at St. Charles Family Arena on Sunday, May seventeenth, 2015. The approximate cost for graduation at St. Charles Family Arena is thirty-nine thousand seven hundred and five dollars, which would be paid by the district funds for the secondary education budget.
Will we have graduation at St. Charles Family Arena?
Discussion?
What would happen if we waited a month on this?
Well, I know the schools are anxious to be able to communicate that information to parents. They are holding those spots. I don't know, Umsol, St. Charles and Marina, they have it on hold, so we could still hold it as well. I know the schools are anxious to have that date put in their calendar and we need it determined. Once graduation is set, based on availability, the location, then we have to communicate the last day for seniors and so on and so forth, so certainly the sooner the better. Because I'm right there, hanging out there.
I'm just considering the possibilities of proposition S. And that's a pretty good target.
It is. Whether we have graduation though at family arena or on campus, the cost is costing a toll, it's a lot the same. So either way, we're in a whole graduation ceremony, so we're spending around forty thousand dollars.
As I recall, Paul, last year when we went through the discussion and all that, that pretty much was the assumption that you came up with, that it would be pretty close to the same.
Right.
And so...
But even better because like the wear and tear, the cost for each individual school and setting it up and not having parents able to have more than five, six tickets per family. So it's the same cost, but allowing more parents and family members to come makes sense.
Good, that is, good is correct. There's certain challenges having graduation on campus. Parking is one, the ticket, the number of tickets that you can give to the graduates. The possibility of family arena variety, tickets, even though we use the tickets to, we do give tickets, even though the space is quite large, you know, we do that to be able to control that. But we are also able to be flexible to give extra tickets as needed. Whereas on campus, that's not, that's not an option. So the number is less that kids will get. When I did the cost estimate back in December, it was a little higher than forty thousand. There were some cost estimates for round preparation and then round repair. And sometimes might have been a little higher, so I think in the end it would have been probably about forty thousand. So they're even cost, so you're gonna spend that money regardless either way.
And weather?
Right, that's true. So if you're outside on campus, you get about seven tickets. If you move inside and you're parking five, then there's no room for extra tickets. And we do, the schools have multiple requests for extra tickets. And they're able to honor that very easily for families as needed. And it's just the need for the number of tickets is gonna vary by family. Some people, you know, want to invite, they're so proud of their child's accomplishment that they want to invite every adult, cousin, and others to go. Maybe it's just a small, not extended family, so it's gonna vary by family. So it's nice to be able to support that for any family or whatever it's going to be, certainly do that in the arena.
I remember correctly, you researched having it in other places and it still was the most economical.
Well, so for example, we were, we have used Umsol in the past and Umsol is a little bit cheaper, but then what you end up with is less tickets. They actually, they reduce their, so there are a couple of different issues at Umsol. It's all of the marching gymnasium, there's bleacher seating, not chair seating. And so they used to use eighteen inches to determine a spot. And then you calculate from there, they come at twenty-two inches. So they actually offer less seating in the past, so we won't be able to get about seven tickets again with no extra seating. The space itself is much smaller. So when you have a family member who decides to really shout out for their graduate, it's much more noticeable in that smaller environment where in the arena that kind of is round out in that big venue. Parking issue at Umsol, we have to provide our own security, we have to provide our own ticket takers. So a lot of that, all of those components are taken care of at the family arena. So the cost itself to rent that Umsol on a Sunday for all three is less, but then when you add in those other costs, so it's still a little bit less, but the added piece of the workers and on a Sunday, which, you know, our employees have already, have worked all week and then also just the parking pieces, it's not convenient for parents. And again, they're limited. Yes, you can get seven tickets, not ten or twelve at the family arena. There's no option for extra seats, especially for the larger baseball from a corner. They'll also be before, now of course, the workers, the smaller graduating class, so certainly they can give extra tickets, but it's not the case for other schools. So, you know, so again, given that, I go back to family arena. This is, we just completed our fifth year of holding graduation at family arena. In fact, Dr. Hopper last week was on some home visits. And randomly was at two families homes, seniors, and both of those parents and their child happened to say, "Hi, do you know where graduation is yet? Is it gonna be at family arena?" So it's, you know, why I think that also the parents are appreciating over there in terms of the seat availability, the parking season to get in and out, and it's well air conditioned.
If I can handle that, the teachers' graduation, I was approached numerous times by patrons of the district, all very, very supportive and very thankful that we did decide to go to the family arena. So as far as the public relations move, family arena seems to be a very popular choice.
Now, I understand that, and I think that we would all be for the family arena, and I'm not trying to suggest that we're not, but Mr. Morris, but you, your concern is Prop S. If it were to fail, regardless, we would still have to take care of the graduation situation. And I'm not sure that if passing and/or failing is going to make a difference in the fact that we are gonna make a choice to graduate kids, and it's going to be in place. So the funds will be available, I'm assuming, either way. They have to be.
I just wanted to, sorry to interrupt you. To raise the point that, to hear the arguments for and against. I just think forty thousand dollars is a lot for graduation, so that's just my opinion.
Any further discussion?
I was gonna piggyback on what he said. I think that's one thing when we talk to the community about cutting budgets. You can cut the budgets all you want, but you know what? Twelve thousand kids are gonna show up on August the fourteenth. We have to educate them. So you can fire all the teachers, you're still gonna have twelve thousand kids. You know, there are limits to what you can do. And I think this is a classic case there of, yeah, it's a lot of money, but you're gonna spend forty thousand bucks no matter what you do with graduation. So why don't you get the best bang for your buck? And in this case, the community certainly thinks family arena does that for us.
I would argue that if we said only spend twenty-five thousand dollars and do it in-house, that that's what we would spend. So I, graduation's nice, and I understand it's a, I don't wanna say necessary, because it is a celebration of what we do here. And I'm just trying to think of all the possibilities.
My comment is, I think both Pauls bring up, and to what I started out on the board update. Every financial decision, you know, if this Prop S fails, I mean, everything's on tape. Both Pauls are right. You know, I know where that's what we struggle with all the time. That's what we're in endless meetings about all the time. So I can see, I can see both points of view. I really can. Where you go, okay, we all wanna celebrate. But it's kinda like your kids, right? If you're out of work, maybe you celebrate with cupcakes versus the whole blooming kid that have the cake with the clowns and everything else. I don't know. I'm not suggesting anything here other than to say it's gonna get extremely difficult moving forward without Prop S.
Any further discussion? Hearing none? All in favor of holding graduation at the St. Charles Family Arena? Say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign?
Aye.
Eyes have it.
Thank you very much.
Ferguson Flores Foundation for Education update.
We need to go back to it. Um, the other district committee, they decided it was important to update the board on the grant and the foundation and the establishment of it. And it's important that you get your, then you understand where we're at so we can move forward because we're at that spot where we need to make a big move. We came up with a name, and the name of the foundation is the Ferguson Flores Education Foundation. And the purpose of the foundation is to form a group of caring concerned citizens with a vision that can enhance our educational opportunities and student success in Ferguson Flores's school district. It will be a five oh one, C three, tech consent, philanthropic organization. And the thought board will be volunteers. And then we can find some business persons, community and educational leaders that oversee this foundation. We do have a mission, and the mission of the Ferguson Flores Education Foundation is to support and generate resources for the Ferguson Flores School District to enrich and expand programs needed to meet the district's stated missions and to promote excellence in education. And the purpose of the foundation is to collaborate with the Ferguson Flores School District in order to provide support for programs that will provide our students with knowledge, skills, and excellence in education necessary to succeed behind beyond high school graduation. Those missions and purposes were established. We also, with those purposes and missions enhanced, and we were able to establish the bylaws. So bylaws have been established and agreed upon. And we've agreed to have nine to twenty members on the board. The board, one of the members would be a superintendent. And then that will also be a member of the Board of Education to serve. And those two positions will just be ex-positio, so they will not be able to go. But we need those people under to help us collaborate with the foundation so that we have the same missions, they know what our missions are, and we can collaborate to raise the funds for the district. So at this time, we are ready to send out letters. We've established a list of people that are in the community. And we are going to be sending out letters. And after we send out the letters, then you have each been identified to follow up with a phone call or a visit so that we can talk to the people so that they understand what they're, what they would be doing with this foundation. And if they really would agree to do this, then we can go ahead and have them onboard. And we would like to have our meeting laid in August with this board of directors. So we've got some work to do, but we wanted to make sure that you all understood where we were in this process so that we can move forward. We believe this foundation will assist the district in not only in our strategic plan goal of community involvement, but it will also provide funding opportunities and to enrich the educational experience of our students. So this was just an informational piece, just to tell you where we're at in the process.
Does anyone have any questions? All right, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Mr. Grass Cutting Company.
Please. Currently, we have an agreement with ideal landscaping to provide grass cutting services for our district, which constitutes about sixteen different locations in our district. After communications with them and meetings, they indicated that they are unable to provide this service for us. Contact our attorney immediately and finding for, due to the circumstance and the small amount of money that makes a difference, it is best, it is in best interest of the district for us to go with a second bidder, originally when they made the bid. The second bidder is an organization that they were providing services for us for the past five years, and it's called MLS Services. And ultimately, we are looking at the difference in the amount of two hundred and eight dollars per cut for the remainder of the year, which would be close to total sum of four thousand dollars in the scope of the budget. The short version, as I'm respectfully personally aware of the situation, consider to go with MLS services for our grass cutting service, as our grass cutting service provided for the remainder of the school. I would want to answer any specific questions about the score and the defaults of this part.
Okay, the cost for using MLS we used last year is still less than the amount that they charged from last year. So it's still a reduced amount from last year, it's just more than what we, what was bidder that we had earlier.
Will we go with MLS services for grass cutting?
Discussion?
So this is mid-year, I mean, they imparted this idea that they couldn't do it anymore.
They indicated that it puts them under extreme financial distress to provide the services.
They shut you up. I was gonna say, I remember when, didn't Terry originally bring this company to us?
They were the lowest.
Right, right. And I remember we were all kinda laughing about, well, that's really low. So I guess there were, there were concerns that had been brought to our attention concerning trimming and other areas that we need to have addressed that was part of the conversation. And it's just more than what, what can be managed. We know the expectations that the community has for our facilities. There have been a couple of things that have been mentioned. And we believe that MLS will be able to do this.
As they have been doing for the previous five years before, idea of that.
This is just to finish off the year and then it gets repaid. We've been asked to explore other options, whether it's what we can do in district. So we'll be exploring that also between now and later this year. We need to decorate the board as far as plans for the 2015 summer.
And that was going to be my question too. Have you looked into, I know initially it was cheaper for the companies to come in and do the long service because of us having to keep up equipment and pay the people to, so you're going to redo, kinda look at this again and see if it's...
Yes, correct. Equipment is a big factor to this, that's a consideration. But yes, we've been asked to review this for next year and suggest you do that. Just to refresh my memory, was this connected anyway? Because I know a lot of these companies do both, is it still removable or is that a different company?
That's not just grass cutting.
Just grass, okay.
And you know, since you're talking about looking at other options, I really just shared some life on this thing. We have about thirty-plus sites in our district. This contract was only to cover sixteen different locations. And these are the smallest locations, which we were talking about, elementary schools, third grade, middle and mark to it. They're handling all the other large sites. But because this has to be done on a weekly basis, we cannot reach to all those little spots to make the district look as good as it should.
Any other discussion? All in favor of accepting MLS services for Mr. Grass Cutting Company? Say aye. All opposed, same sign? Hearing none?
Eyes have it.
Can I sign off as our locations for the board meetings?
There's been interest, again, about having board meetings at some of our schools during the course of the school year. And we've reviewed those locations. There are three that are recommended that's the board's interest. The three that we would recommend would be a September meeting, the September tenth meeting at Cool Valley Elementary School, the January fourteenth, 2015 meeting. We would recommend Johnson-Walbash Elementary School. And then because of the library program or the reading program that... And then because of the library program or the reading program that is all every day, um, we were looking at the May thirteenth, two thousand and fifteen meeting at Mcclair South Berkeley, uh, High School.
Do I have a motion?
Move.
Mr. Hart said, you said. Any discussions regarding the board locations?
I wish your thinking.
Go ahead.
What was your thinking on just selecting through schools and why these through schools?
The two, uh, elementary schools have not been used before, so it's to, to go to a different, uh, you know, we're scanning out there's some places that we, the board is not adding three to. Um, for Mcclair South Berkeley, it's, a lot of it's the size of the, uh, the reading program that occurs in the school year, uh, library program, which we, uh, McClure when we had this year did not really fit, uh, the needs of the program playing very well. You know, being able to go between auditorium and the, uh, uh, the comments area at NSD, it's, it's, uh, it was much more beneficial, I think, for the librarians that were involved or the sponsors that were involved. I think that's accurate and that's what was communicated to us this year. So we tried to be accommodated to, to them for that purpose.
What is the financial impact on the district for us to do this off-site?
Dr. Jidali, uh, he's looked into this. There are, there are costs, um, for our technology staff, the people that do this setup. Here it's very easy because it's, uh, established. We have the facilities, every one of our new sites that we go to, uh, have various technology needs. Um, there are some training costs because we don't bring the laptops, uh, you know, try and, uh, remove that aspect, but there's still the training cost that we do. It varies by site. Um, I don't know if it's the manpower over how many people, I think you figured approximately four people, uh, that go into each one of those traveling, uh, board sites.
Yes, and, and beside the fact that there are always are unknowns when we go to a site, we have to make sure we go in advance, make sure that it's set up, we test and retest. And, and there are many times, and as you have experienced, people they come with different kinds of cell phones and all of a sudden we have issues that we didn't anticipate. Uh, the preparation time obviously is a factor. We have to go in advance, do a site visit to make sure that things are going to work, set things up, make sure all the wires are everything are ready so there won't be a hazard. So there are some always unknown issues that we struggle with to make sure that it's working. And the staff to make sure, to make sure that the wireless and variables like that, the sound system, everything that we take into consideration, it's difficult to the dollar amount, but easily can be said that minimum four people, two days they have to spend, go after those to make sure that everything is on proper.
I think one of the comments that you made to me was that it, it's removing them from their regular responsibilities to, uh, so that's, that will be a factor as far as, you know, salary costs, it varies by, by vote, but, uh, we also understand the interest of the board to be out of the community and it has been interests, uh, you know, so we, we try to accommodate, but yes, there is cost. Um, this is, uh, as it varies by, by sign.
Could I ask, how many years have we been doing this?
This would be the third year.
We've done two and this will be the third. And as I recall, when we first, first did this, um, there were a couple things we were hoping is that we would hope there'd be more community participation. And I know the first time, first time we did it, we did try to take all those laptops because we moved to the paperless means for cost and wear and tear on our staff. Um, but that didn't work out. I remember we had some serious problems with the network not working and so on. And even with the time you might put in, uh, people put in rather, uh, we had problems. So this, I believe this has passed you, we've done the paper board bullets, which are quite a real paper easily, you know, and that. Um, but my concern is the, um, wear and tear we're making on our people. As we've cut, we've asked our people to do more. And it seems to me like this is one place we could say, you know, we would like to get out the community, we see some positives in doing that, but it's one way that we can let up on our staff a little bit and as Dr. Jidali went out, let them do their regular job. And I think, yes, it's hard to put dollars and cents on the exact amount, there's time to see some money spent, but tying away from what our people are really regularly doing. And so for those reasons, I'll be voting no on this.
If I may, we've had some discussion, uh, as we bring this to the board tonight, that there could be opportunities to have the types of meetings, maybe not board meetings, but town hall meetings and to get those up. The, the, uh, amended vote, uh, was, was very well attended this year, uh, because there was, uh, must be shared prior to board meeting. So there could be those opportunities, uh, we try to be mindful of and I think that we anticipated, uh, you know, those forums to be, um, continuing if, if, as you put, if the working sells, there, there are some challenges.
I agree that Mcclair South Berkeley was perfect for the, the reading, um, program. I agree with that and, um, if it is decided to go to the schools, which I've never been in favor of, so my vote will be no too. But, um, I would like to see us, and all three schools are in south. And I think that's not representing the entire community either. And I think we need to look at least one of the elementary schools in, in the other, in the north area of the district because they're both way. That's just my, trying to represent the entire district in location. If we're trying, if our purpose is to get people out, then we need to be able to have a where, if I can't go south, I might be able to get in a central area.
Since we're already in the north part of the district, you know, so it would be actually.
I can understand that wanting to do south because.
I know.
Yeah, yeah. And I, I really understand and appreciate the fact that you want to get out and to get into the community so that we can give them, give them opportunity to attend the meeting. I think something that Paul said, which kind of, yeah, it, it does make sense that, I don't know, because I, I've never been to one of those meetings, but if they're poorly attended, is it worth the, the amount of money that it costs, especially since we're watching our dollars right now?
I can answer that. I mean, it seems to me that some are and some aren't, you know, it just kind of depends on what's going on. Uh, I, I've always been a supporter of it because I've heard nothing but positive feedback from the community. Uh, the people in these schools, uh, seem to look at it as a, like a pride thing before we come. Um, and, um, it really puts a lot of faces, uh, you know, for me, uh, seeing, uh, you know, seeing the different people and things like that. Also, I've heard, uh, staff really like it. Um, but I, I will probably be voting no on this for what Multrayer said. I mean, you know, everything's about the dollars these days. We don't even, I mean, I joke with our druthers all the time, but I did not, we don't even have, did anybody notice we don't have cookies anymore at the meetings? Um, so I mean, it's, uh, it's high. So I think it's a great idea, I really do. Uh, every, everything has its season at the time.
Well, I think Paul said that I respect him like the most is the fact of, of personnel resources.
Right.
You know, it is a big deal for financial resources, but it is also, I, I feel a bigger impact on the personnel and then with Dr. Jidali saying we're taking them away from other work and if they have to give them more responsibilities because of budget cuts, then that makes it even deeper. We're able to take them away for a half a day or two half-days. So, I'm, thank you, Paul.
If you're going to have town hall meetings and hold them concurrently on the same day, the same place, then, then it doesn't really add to the, to the cost because you're going to have to set up a town hall meeting as well. So if that's your intent, I think that's a sure.
It doesn't sound, um, pretty good looks. I'm old enough, been on the board long enough, every Friday we got these big updates and we had couriers do all the billing and that was really burdensome and just not having to do that. Because I, I don't know who would have that, I don't know what to do with this. Somebody would have to print those stupid booklets and put them together so we could all have them at those locations. I don't have to do that for a town hall meeting.
The setup would be totally different for a town hall meeting, would, would it not be, I mean, we would not have this, again, learning, we would not have this type of setup for a town meeting, so we would not, okay.
Last, last year when we had the vote, we had a town hall meeting prior to it, September. And, uh, and then we held a town hall meeting after. It was at six o'clock and seven o'clock.
It was a vote. Is that what you said? So you still had to do setup. I'm just asking if you did something to set up for it and did a town hall meeting separate from the board meeting.
It would, uh.
It wouldn't control this, it would, the cost wouldn't be there.
You can also take, uh, files of the ads, which are on PDF files, you could upload them onto this computer, you wouldn't have that network. Even if we stay paperless and sell ads on the computer. Because all files are PDF files, correct? Yeah.
But it would also be nice to have town hall meetings in between. You know, occasionally, that's what we talked about for many, many years as Paul, since he's talking about all times, we've talked about it for a long time, having town hall meetings, not with the board meeting, but at a town hall meeting where people can come and talk to the board, ask the board questions and we can present things to the district and present things. So that, I think that would be very good, separate from the board meetings.
Any other discussion? So a motion has been made to accept the administration's recommendation to hold three board meetings off-site, Cool Valley, Johnson Law Bash, and Mcclair South Berkeley. Motion to be made, is seconded.
Oh, good night. Can I add something real quick? Um, is there a lot of expense? You know, I'm, I'm kind of really narrowing it down to the dollars here. We involved in a lot of the expense and we moved it over to the, the other, over here, to the, to the big room. I was just kind of wondering.
All right, all in favor of holding three board meetings off-site for the twenty fourteen, twenty fifteen school year, say aye. All opposed? Same sign?
All right. Mr., uh, real quickly, would you want us to make a, a separate motion to hold the main meeting there for purposes of Multrayer's works? You know, that's an interest of the board's, uh, but it is probably wise to do so. I think that's probably still the interest of, of that, if we could do so.
Do you want to do that now or do that at another meeting?
It'd be great to go ahead and have it for calendars for notice.
And we did verify that there's no other conference on that.
Yes, I'm talking, I'm very excited, so I'm, I'm going to. I know we have a main board meeting at, um, Mcclair South Berkeley.
Any other discussions regarding the main board meeting for Mcclair South Berkeley? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. You started the devotion.
Yes.
All right, uh, we're going to receive a update, uh, regards to, uh, of experience on demand.
Mr. Steve Finkelstein and Ms. Gigi Mix will provide reports on two initiatives involving their firm's experience on demand, the superintendent community survey and the district's strategic plan. They will report on feedback received since the launch of the superintendent survey in late May and provide an outline of the district's final strategic plan.
Thank you, Jan. Good evening.
Good evening.
Um, these are the results for July seventh of the survey. And first of all, who's taken the survey? I think what's interesting here is that certified staff was by far the largest participant group and twice as many teachers and people from certified staff have taken the survey as parents. So obviously, I want to see more parents feedback. And when you look at some of the verbatim comments we received, it is obvious that teachers are expressing their opinions throughout the survey. We also did see a fairly large number of support staff taking the survey, so they're very engaged and they're very much, uh, involved and have many opinions about what's important in the superintendent search. You can see the other groups as well that participated in taking the survey so far. We had almost seven hundred, uh, responses to the survey so far, six hundred and ninety-eight. So first of all, we asked them, what are your top five priorities from this list of superintendent characteristics? And top among all the selections was a commitment to having student achievement and to promoting that. So that is extremely important, that they want a superintendent that is committed to student achievement, they want a superintendent that is a strong leader. And those were by far the two most frequently mentioned characteristics. But you also saw they weren't familiar with experience leading in managing large organizations, complex organizations, fiscal responsibility was another characteristic that's been important, and also commitment to public education. So those were the top priorities that were expressed by the people taking the survey. The other thing we asked for are additional criteria for selecting the new superintendent. And first two are pretty much no brainer, as you expect that. Uh, background, um, check of course. And background is an educator, Ms. King backed very strongly and I'll show you a couple of of the items that is important to person that experiences in educator. And I think that also is reflected by the fact that there were a number of teachers and administrative staff taking the survey. They were the strongest force in the responses. They also want some of the excellent references, some of the describes to the core values of Ferguson Forest and School District, uh, and some of the strongest supports the mission and vision and has prior teaching experience. So again, I think that's the teachers that are very much saying that and feel very strongly. about that. And those were the most important characteristics. Just to give you an idea, there were some key themes that came out of this. They want someone with discipline, disciplined, discipline, we heard that. Strict, fair, and consistent enforcement of policy and just some selections from the quote, someone who's not afraid to deal with behavior issues, someone who will hold the students accountable for their actions and their work, and not just the teachers, someone not afraid to establish discipline in all schools, supporting the teachers in their efforts to set disciplinary standards. So, these are just selections to support what in time about as far as themes that emerged from the survey. They want someone with a strong decisive leader, not afraid to make tough decisions. Has to be a solid decision maker and unable to make decisions even if they might be unpopular. Someone able to identify issues that are retarding the quality of education and strength to address them immediately. And the number one job should be to lead the school district, is another one of the verbatim comments. And they may have to make hard decisions, but it's important that they can do that and understanding that not always satisfy everybody, but they're able to do that and they're strong enough to do that. They want someone with teaching experience and an academic background. And again, it's great to have a leader both in the classroom as a teacher and someone that also serves as a principal. So, they're looking for that in the background, someone that's well-rounded and big-picture thinker, strong instructional background. And this, I thought, was particularly interesting. One of the comments was that the administrator job has drastically changed in the last ten years. The new style administrator must be a good teacher and expect to be able to recognize the most important role in the district, the classroom teacher. So, again, you see who was really participating in the survey and how strongly they feel about it. But they want someone that's able to engage with parents and encourage their involvement in their children's education. A person really needs to ensure that parents understand district's discipline policies and enforce them, and parents are number one in preparing their students for learning, not just the teachers and staff. And another comment was, as a teacher in the district and a parent in the district, I see the decline of family values and who is more involved directly with the students. Lead a leader who sees the problem, takes action to improve it. And obviously, someone with excellent interpersonal skills and communication ability. Someone who has an interest in what is best for our children and yet is able to speak with parents, even our kids, about what is going on in these schools. Someone that has a background working with diverse populations and the ability to connect with students and families. Ability to communicate effectively and relate to students at all levels and in all roles. And finally, commitment to raising and achieving of all students. Based on recent events, we need to have someone who will display immediate leadership and who will communicate genuine commitment to educating our students. Need to commit struggling to developing skills in reading, writing, arithmetic, facing problems, solving clear thinking skills. This is more important to have a superintendent who understands what teachers and principals face daily and is committed to raising achievement. So, they actually not loud in prayer. So, that's just a real top-level view, some excellent verbatim comments, which I will summarize and share with you. But I think you can see that there were some people taking the survey were extremely engaged and they have those strong feelings. We plan to keep the survey open. We want to keep it open after school starts and beginning of the school year, because I think what we really would like to see is more parents. And parents out there, if you haven't taken the survey, please do. Your voice is extremely important. This is an important decision that's going to be made, and your input is essential to guide the decision that's made. Okay? Thank you.
And just one more quick point. This survey is a great opportunity to start to keep engagement community. And when you look at the results in terms of percentages, as Gigi said, let's get more parents involved, because if you look, if I remember the statistics right, eight hundred teachers, you got, is that right? Eight hundred teachers? So, we got about twenty-five percent of the teachers? But there's six thousand parents, so we got two hundred surveys back. It's a very low percentage. And so, we really encourage anything you can do in your marches, whatever it is, we want to get those parents involved. All right. Strategic planning. So, I want to talk about the progress we've made to date, the major, the key strategic plan components, and then discuss next steps. We're gonna walk through the major goal areas. So, where are the five areas we're gonna focus on, which are the most important things to do? What are some of the specific projects to support those goals? And then, most important about strategic planning is not just the plan, but how we can execute the plan. And so, the guiding principles of execution will be the way we'll start executing the plan. And the things you're seeing tonight came from not just thirteen hundred surveys and, you know, a dozen interviews, but we had parent-focused groups, we had two strategic planning evening meetings with fifty-plus people. So, a lot of engagement, a lot of involvement from people all over the district, and many of you in this room have seen your faces before. You know who you are, right? And then, we're gonna talk about what are those vital few things, the most critical things we need to make sure go right? And so, in our process of finalizing the plan, we will actually assess where are we on the critical success factors? In some cases, we're well-positioned, in some cases, we're not well-positioned. We want to make sure we have action steps to raise our level of readiness. And then, we'll talk about some next steps. And these next steps are tentative. These are not firm dates, have been approved by the board, but these are suggested dates. So, the update is, we have a grand strategic plan. And it's pretty comprehensive. We've completed the two workshops, and now in the process of being reviewed, updated, and refining with the board. So, these are the six major areas we're gonna focus on. It's important to do a few things really well rather than a lot of things pretty good. And pretty good isn't good enough for our students. So, the first major goal area is focusing on achieving and maintaining accreditation and student achievement. It's all about the students. The second thing is to make sure the school infrastructure and processes are in place to support and be conducive to an educational environment. And then, we've heard about the proposition and budgets and everything else, as well as some of the qualifications for the new superintendent. Fiscal responsibility and financial stability is critical. And that means taking a look at every opportunity, not just to control the cost, but equally as important, is how we allocate the money we get to the most important thing. And nothing gets done without stakeholder and community engagement. And that's all areas of engagement. This whole survey process and strategic planning has been part of engaging the community. So, engaging parents, engaging teachers, engaging residents, community, engaging businesses, everyone in this room. It's getting everyone involved in the partnerships and alliances. And then, nothing gets done without the right people. And so, we have to make sure that we have the right skills, the right leadership, the right development and growth opportunities, the right retention, the right recruiting. It sounds like we recruited some great people this evening, and we saw, we want to see those people two years, three years, five years down the road. So, talent management, from the teachers to the administration to the board, we have to make sure we recruit, retain, develop, engage our talent. And then, there must be a classroom and school climate conducive to learning. So, minimize the disruptions, any violence or bullying in the classroom, the environment of respect. And a lot of this is gonna be on prevention, not just crisis. So, whatever we can do, and that's part of a lot of these things tie together, when you start engaging parents to support all the disciplinary rules or to support studying and those type of things. So, these all fall together in terms of a package of six areas that we have to excel in so that we can be, continue to be a great school district. Sound good? And we're gonna do it, right? So, what's important is we have to start measuring things. So, some of the old cliches, what gets measured gets done, what gets measured gets attention. Without measures, you're only practicing. You're not, if you're not keeping score, you're only practicing. So, we put together, again, this came collectively from a lot of input. For each goal area, there are specific metrics. And so, we have not put the dollars or the numbers in here yet, but we have identified, we kind of use the eighty-twenty rule. What's the twenty percent of the metrics that make up eighty percent of this goal? And if we hit these five or six metrics under each major goal area, we're gonna win. So, we're gonna win at a high level. So, one of the next steps is, over the next two, three weeks, is start fleshing out, what are the numbers? And so, we have this year as a baseline, and then we'll start looking at next year and the next three years so we can see the improvement in these metrics. And then, to support those will be the actions and initiatives. So, again, this will take a look at whether it's school infrastructure or talent management. You can see retention at all levels, and we'll be doing an engagement survey, which will be a baseline to measure the level of engagement by different areas, right? So, it could be teachers, it could be administration, it could be support staff. And taking a look at that every year so we can start seeing what level of engagement do we get today. It's not just employee satisfaction that's really getting our staff and employees engaged. So, these are kind of some of the metrics. And when you put together metrics like this, you start with what you think are the right metrics, and over time, they may be refined, you add one here, subtract one there, but this is the current thought. And the last one, which is important, when you look at stakeholder and community engagement, again, plans will be to do surveys of all the different stakeholders. So, parents, residents, et cetera. And we're gonna make this as easily accessible as possible, just like we've been doing throughout this past seven months. And some of the things we heard about today, about community outreach with the new 501(c)(3), things we heard about, some of the town hall meetings, I mean, all those are gonna be part of the strategy to reach out to the community and get everyone engaged. The next thing that's really important is, we talked about this earlier, one of the underlying themes of this whole strategic plan is that we're one district. We're not twenty different schools, we're one district. And that came through loud and clear in all the workshops, all the focus groups, and all the surveys. So, once we get in place the strategic goals and measures, there'll be an alignment scorecard that says, how are we doing by school or by building in each of these measures? Because we want to make sure we achieve alignment. Make sense? So, we're all on the same sheet of paper. And then, the next thing we did is, we said, for every goal, what are the three or four or five key projects? So, we have to have areas of focus of action to get things done. So, during the workshops, with input of the surveys and focus groups, we developed for each of the various goals, key projects. And you can see under the second one, project one is the bond issue campaign. I mean, that is a critical project, and I hear some great things tonight about getting out there, marketing and contacting, engaging people. But these are key projects that have to get done. Now, nothing gets done without a plan, right? So, we just can't say, let's do a project. We have to say, let's do a project with a plan. So, for every one of these projects, there'll be a first cut in a high-level plan that says, for these projects, who's gonna do it? What quarter are they gonna be done in? And are some of these gonna be done, what, only once for the next school year? Or will they be done year after year after year? For example, an engagement survey would be done yearly, and then you can measure the progress. The bond issue hopefully will not be done every year, because it's gonna pass this year. But some things, again, will be one time, but other things will be ongoing. And then, this is the first cut in a high-level plan, but then nothing gets done just by quarter. So, we're gonna help the, your school district develop a detailed plan that we can monitor the projects by month. So, this would be an example, if we're doing recruiting, engagement, and retention, we're gonna have specific projects and month by month milestones that we have to achieve. And then, there'll be a dashboard that gives you for every of those six goals and the projects within every goal, the actual progress being made, what percent complete, is it red, yellow, green? So, if it's on schedule, it'd be a green. If it's slightly behind schedule, we plan to catch up, it'll be a yellow. And if in real trouble, it's gonna be a red. And so, what's important here is we see lots of greens. We don't want to see lots of reds. And then, to make it easy, there'll be one column that says, what's the progress we've made in the past month and what's the plan for the next month? So, in very concise terms, in one page or maybe one and a half page, there'll be a dashboard, very simple to use, of the progress against each goal, the projects within that goal, who's responsible, what we've accomplished, and what we plan for next month. Sounds like a plan. Now, in order, and again, this came from all the input that we gave at this group. What do we have to excel in? So, what are the things, the actions, the supporting infrastructure, the culture, what has to happen for us to be not just pretty good at achieving the plan, but excelling in achieving the plan? And this is not in any order, although it may seem like it's in a priority order. But this is like a puzzle, and all these pieces have to fit. And some of these pieces, we're doing better than others. But we have to understand, because later on, over the next three weeks, we're gonna assess our readiness in these twelve areas, and then we're gonna figure out where we're strong, let's stay strong. Where we're not so strong, how do we build and get strong in those areas? So, let's talk, and some of these are pretty obvious. We must have added the funding. If we don't have the right funding and allocate the funding properly, which is important as well, it's gonna be hard to accomplish what we want to do. Not impossible, but it's gonna be harder. So, we need to make sure we have the right funding. We also have to have student achievement. So, we have to maintain our accreditation, and we have to see graduation rates and test scores and attendance and individual student scores continue to go up. You know, the percent of people at their grade level in reading and math, et cetera. And nothing gets done without strong leadership. So, that's leadership from the board, administration, superintendent, interim superintendent. I mean, this leadership is really gonna drive the plan. And then, boy, what's the number one thing that can help success of your students? We have to have quality teachers. They're the variable we can control. Even without all the budget and all the right facilities, all the right technology, those quality teachers seem to make the work. And if you look at those teachers, and I, and it was interesting to see that there's the development plan, helping teachers with it, was a two-day, two-day training. I mean, those are the things that came through the survey. Give the teachers the training they need. Let them be innovative in the class. Let's have mentors and onboarding for new teachers. And then, nothing would get done without engaged stakeholders. So, even if you have the best teachers, any, I think that went the wrong way here.
Which direction would you like to go?
Backwards. It's haunted up there. All right. Thank you. And even if, even if we have all the things above, if we don't have the support of the parents when the students go home, and enforcing a conducive environment for learning, and the community, et cetera, and then we also have to have all the same sheet of paper, right? So, we're one district, we should have consistent policies, consistent procedures, consistent enforcement, enforcement, et cetera. And then, we need a strategic plan so that everyone knows where we're going. And then, equally as important, we need to execute the plan. Because a great plan sitting on the shelf is not gonna just where we need to be. We have to have a classroom environment conducive to learning, and it was probably one of the loudest messages we heard, both on the superintendent recruiting survey as well as all the other surveys. And then, we need effective communication, so we're putting a lot of pressure on Jana. But everything has to be communicated clearly, transparency, no surprises, we need to build a brand, a reputation. And then, we need the right facilities that are maintained, clean, safe. safe, with the right amount of space. So in execution, what are the behaviors that we need to do? And we're saying some great ones tonight with the board. We need effective decision-making. And decisions based on facts, not just, I think so. And we need prioritization. So if we can't do a lot of things really well, we can do a few things really well. And so we have to make sure we prioritize where we spend our time and our resources and our money. And then we have to collaborate. So collaborate, both internal and external, environment of trust, focus on the team, what's right for the district. And then we need to be consistent, which again, follows on the one-district focus. So consistent policies and procedures, alignment of goals, and then we have to be forward-thinking, so that problems potentially coming up in the future, we can anticipate and be ready for those problems. We have to make sure that we can focus on retention, so we're not in a crisis mode all the time. And the last area is, we need to focus on results, and have people accountable for those results. So it's not just activities that people are doing as results. And that's one of the reasons why we have measures and plans and dates and scorecards, so that you can track your progress and see all the fine results that we're getting. So tentative next steps. It would be great to have, by the end of this month, the remaining piece of the strategic plan. So what are those metrics we're putting in there, and fine-tuning any wording? And then have a strategic plan presented and approved by the board by the end of this month. And then, we'll work with you to develop this operational plan, so by quarter and by month, what are those key factors going on? And then, one of the recommendations, which we'll schedule for August and September, is a focus group with all the principals. So we can get the principals in the room, to help them align with what you're gonna do for the year to support the overall district strategic plan. And then, have a focus group with teachers, which could be two or three, or maybe four teachers per building, and let them work together on what challenges they need to face, what solutions are they gonna work on, so we can strike you to them and bow, and the execution will fail. And that's it. It's pretty exciting to see where we're going. And now the heart, the fun part's starting to play. Any questions by anybody?
The report's just for informational purposes only, but if you have questions... What's the next step for the board to take?
To review the draft of strategic plan, where we can get together with you and take a deep dive into page by page, so whatever tweaking you wanna make, agreeing on metrics, we can fill in suggestive metrics, but we need your approval on what those look like. And so, scheduling a two-hour deep dive.
What's your timeline on that?
And what's really important is, with the Proposition S coming up, it would be really exciting in all of your communication that we have approved strategic plan. And that's why we put by the end of the month. Because that tells people where we're going, it's an exciting plan, it's all about the students, and I think that could help build the momentum, because it's a bright future. And we need their support. So, we're ready when you're ready. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. LaRue, here to speak to us regarding the board member conflict of interest and financial disclosure.
Yes, every other year, the information states that it's every year. But every other year, the school board is required to, just like all other Missouri school districts, is required to re-adopt a policy on conflict of interest and financial disclosure. Our policy is forty thirty-six on this. There's also a penix R, which is the old section BP dash five, it's the same policy, but to re-adopt this year, we can miss next year, but we need to be able to report that. So we would ask to re-adopt the policy as it is currently.
Would we adopt the policy as it is currently?
Second. All right, questions made, and accepted. Any questions? All in favor of accepting current board policy for the conflict of interest and financial disclosure, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same side, aye or none, ayes have it. Laura Madruza, will talk to us regarding the project labor agreement.
Okay, I'm here with the secretary, O'Neil, who is on a beach this week, and so, he did offer to Skype in, and we said that was okay, I apologize for pulling the horn. So, here I am, it's a doctor. So at the request of the Board of Education, Terry O'Neil, Larry, Larry, and myself met with some board members to explore the use of a project labor agreement for the Ferguson Flores School District. We did find that other districts and municipalities do use this tool for large construction projects, and after reviewing all the pros and cons, we did determine that we would peer away from neighboring school districts, and recommend a revision to our current bidding policy number six zero five three. This policy amendment will add language that the district may have turned to an agreement for projects with a cost of two hundred and fifty thousand dollars or more, and there are several variables that are supposed to be met once that dollar threshold has been met. Please note that we do not currently have any projects on the table right now for that cost, but we just wanted to have this policy in place if it's needed. And it's also important to note that the ESCO group that you approved last month to approve our facilities currently uses all labor groups, and so this will not affect the projects that they're looking at. So this is the first reading of policy six oh five three.
Oh, excuse me.
Have you got a question, no?
Motion first by Moe, that we accepted. I'm sorry, I'm sorry, you're right.
Haven't we done this in the past?
We did have a big, the last big project we had was Johnson-Walbash and Brooklyn Forest School. At that time, they did use an electric company that was not a labor, you know, was just a non-union group. And there was a lot of, I made a phone call to Ron, and just said, what happened during that time? And there were a lot of back and forths between, it was really a hard time, and we, they did come to agree that they would try to use labor in the future, with the student future. But it was a big ordeal at the time.
I know when this was brought up, I scratched my head, and I thought we already did.
We really don't have an agreement in place, it was more of a gentleman's agreement that we will try to use that.
And it's still made.
And it's still made. And there are, if you read the policy that's added to the policy, there are several things that they have to meet. It has to be fifty percent public state funds, there's Caspian Act analysis, there's a whole bunch of things they have to do, and then there has to be a hearing.
Right.
So it's not...
And they ended it at the beginning. There's not a requirement for the future board or district to do it, so they may do it, if we decide to.
That's correct.
Just for a bit of sure.
Again, this is the first reading, and I'll be watching the board again, at the August meeting. Mr. LaRue, superintendent search firm, request board proposal.
We have a proposal that is updated at current dates, the best that could be determined, with a number of search firms to be contacted for superintendent search. One of the questions, actually, we expanded out the number to, what do we have, seven? Seven different firms. These have been provided, actually, Dr. Villan has helped with this, as well as Margie in contacting those firms from local districts that have been pleased with the efforts of their firms, as well as Education Plus, we contacted them to get feedback from Johnson P. So, we think that with this proposal, with the timeline that was recommended, at least would meet the wishes of the board, there's some dates that might have to be modified, but it's pretty close, and I think it's representative of both of what your interests are at this point.
Do you have a motion?
It's not moved.
Second.
All right, discussions regarding your request for proposal.
Yes, Larry and Leslie, is it basically the same wording that we've done in the past? It's just we've updated the dates and so forth?
Yes.
It looks very familiar to me.
There is one piece of data, and I asked for it to be included within the RFP, where if you read the RFP, that we are a school district that's predominantly eighty percent African-American. One of the discussions that we've had as a board, and we've had in the community, is that our school district doesn't quite reflect the entire population of the district, and it was something that we've really been trying to address. So I just asked Larry to pull some data and to include that demographics for the entire school district in part of the RFP. Because we are a more diverse community than what our school district actually reflects, and that was the point I was trying to make.
Is that in here somewhere?
Uh, no.
It's information that was taken off the census for Ferguson Flores School District. In your, in this RFP on page three, in the second paragraph, it shares some information about the district, so this information from, this is an African community survey information on Ferguson Flores School District that would be incorporated, or just it'd be one sentence, just add a little piece. Unless there's something else that you all see that you, we need to...
All in favor of sending out the RFP, Superintendent Church, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same side, aye or none, ayes have it. This portion of the board meeting will be made available to suggestions and or questions from the audience. A maximum of fifteen minutes is provided for reflection and/or questions from members of the audience. Members of the audience who wish to speak to the board are requested to speak to the podium, identify themselves, and limit remarks to three minutes. In keeping with District Policy four zero five nine, personnel law speakers should refrain from making negative comments that are personally identifiable. To comply with the Missouri Sunshine Law and District Policies four zero five four and four zero five nine, board members will not respond to comments made during public topic, period. The subject of public comments will be noted in minutes and appropriately addressed by the district. Do you have anybody that wishes to address the board?
Hi, my name's Arthur Winters Jr. I'm fortunate enough and blessed enough that I work for Life Course and I'm for Ferguson Flores. But I'm a proud resident in turn of students that go to the school of Flores. I'm very interested in what's going on with Proposition S. And my question is, data has shown, and I've been around long enough to know that the parents weren't involved, that's part of the issue. They don't get all the votes, that's been been known. In my subdivision, I talk to my neighbors, and most of my neighbors are older adults who don't have kids in the school. They don't know about Proposition S. So, I don't know if it's a question or if it's a mistake, how is it we're going to reach those residents in the district who don't have kids in the schools, to tell them about Proposition S? Because those are the ones who go out to the polls. They're retired, they're at home, they're not going to work, they're more certain to oppose than they're going home, and then they show up, and they see Proposition S, and they don't know. I talked to my neighbors last night, who live across the street, and they knew nothing about it, until we were holding a conversation. So, I understand we need to build that relationship with the parents, but we also gotta build a relationship with the other folks. These residents in my neighborhood, they've been living in there thirty-eight, forty years. They pay their taxes, they own their homes. That's all I'd like to say.
I'm Les Langston, resident of the district. I heard seven board members tonight talk about how important Prop S was. Last two weeks, we had community involvement forums, they weren't published, I'm very active, and I only know one, because I got a phone call a couple hours before the meeting. I was there, and it was like, seven, maybe ten people. Two board members showed up to say, oh, important, that is, to our community, that Prop S passes. I think we had poor board support the last time we put a bond issue through, and we saw what happened to that one. If you're really serious about it, you better show the community you're serious about it. The other issue that, the last few months, we've seen some very quality people in this district leave. Some principals, some people that have grown up in this district, are homegrown people. If they're leaving, what kind of message is in our upper administration? Why do they want to leave this district? Is there something there we don't know about? It's kinda scary. Because if you think about May of two thousand thirteen, Normandy was a school district. May of two thousand fourteen, Normandy isn't a school district any longer. I hate to see Ferguson Flores follow the same steps.
Good evening. I have to agree with Les, that if we're gonna give Prop S, do you give Ferguson Shaw? That we definitely need to get out there and work, and I think Hallmark's did a good job of laying out all the stuff that we plan to get done. Listening to the reports tonight, I was concerned with the PDF committee's report. As I sat there looking at the screen, I wondered, and I'd just like to go back to a courageous conversation, and ask everyone who is in leadership in this district, who is hiring staff in, where are the African-American staff? I just didn't see them in that screen. Now, I'm sure that some, I don't have the current information in terms of what our stats are in the district, but I am super concerned about that. Mrs. Chabot pointed out that, of course, our community does not reflect our student population in the district, but by golly, we're teaching a large number of African-American students, and they need to feel that someone, teaching is an art. And in that art, you are able to bring your students in, and they begin to feel comfortable when they see people who look like them. And I'm not saying that we need to fire people, I'm saying people who are hiring people, raise your conscious level, and make sure that you're bringing staff, African-American staff on board, and other minority staff on board. It seems that we're losing, there was a time when I was hired for the district, we had a larger African-American population that was employed by the district, and I see us losing it. So I'm just asking you to raise your conscious level, those who are doing the hiring, to make sure that we're bringing African-Americans staff. Thank you.
Good evening, Kimberly Benz. I wanted to actually just point out a couple of things. One, I have talked to a lot of people in the public, and I just wanted to let you all know that I feel that unfortunately, you still have a very big uphill battle for Prop S. And the reason why I say that is actually, you have two things working against you. Everything from last year, confidence in our district is still very... Everything from last year, confidence in our district is still very, very low. And secondly, I don't know if some of you are aware, but the Florsen Valley Fire District has also put a forty percent tax levy on the same ballot. So, I have a feeling that people are going to vote probably for one or the other. Personally, I do hope that they vote for Prop S because of the fact that I have seen the numbers, and I think that you guys have done a really good job at making cuts. And I keep telling people that, I think it's, I think it's the balance there, that you guys have done your part, we need to do a little bit of our part to at least stabilize and we go forward. But I'm not getting good responses from people. Just last week, I went to the town hall meeting, and there was the same dozen faces that I've seen that have seen, it's a great presentation. But I've seen it three times, and most of the people there had seen it multiple times. That's not getting anywhere. And then, I hear, I wasn't able to make last night, because again, I didn't want to say this more than time.
No, I get it.
I can't hear the turnout last night, because it was very, very loud. I'm doing everything I can to get the information out there, hey, these are when the meetings are, this is, you know. But when you guys were talking about town hall meetings, I highly suggest at some point throughout this school year, that you guys have a town hall meeting that's completely separate from a school board meeting, and sit down and take questions from the public, a good two-hour session of just strictly Q and A, and make yourselves available. Thank you.
Good evening, Tony Burrow up here. I just came to say thanks. Having a fantastic summer weekend, and I can put it on last time what all we were doing. I got to tell you, you are making budget cuts, you're doing well. You cut me. I appreciate that. I called the other day and said, hey, I need some laptops. The guy who was doing our robotics this summer, he's so excited about how engaged our students are, he decided to do another extra day of volunteering. And then, he said, these kids are so good, we better do two more hours a week. I said, we need more laptops. I called, you know, him, because of resources. But I understand that. I picked up the phone and called Girl Scouts of Eastern Missouri. They said, how many do you need? So, we got them, and we're doing well. I do want to express my appreciation to Terry O'Neill. Our youth in-service project this year was environment and beautification of the grounds. We had sixty volunteers to come over and clean up over at Duchesne. You won't know the place. I would like to make a suggestion that we would do this at other schools. We did it when I was over at Airport. We did it over at Johnson Wabash. I'm telling you, this is a project that works. And I'm hoping that we will help these other schools that don't have the manpower or the money to do it, to start doing an in-service project. The kids love it. They come in their dungarees, their old dirty shoes, because I tell them, I'm not going to look out for your tennis shoes. They come and they enjoy it. So, I want to tell you, that's a suggestion I would like to make. The other thing that I want to tell you about is that we have, we have retired teachers, principals, and superintendents, and I had, that are coming over to Duchesne to help on a one-on-one basis our kids that are reading below grade level, our kids that need help in math. I got a letter this afternoon before I left. One of my staff came up and she said, lady dropped off a letter. I didn't read it. At the end of the program, I get a letter from Pam. I'm going to read it to you. It says, Ms. Tony, this is to let you know, Dee and I really appreciate the opportunity given to C and T this summer. Those are her kids. I'm just going to use C and T. This summer, we were hoping to give C something to do that would give him a positive influence to life. This summer camp did accomplish that. The things that he was given, the opportunities he used, such as going to the forum to learn informing, robotics, and going to the city museum, he got a scholarship for a whole week at Circus Flora. Are just a few that C really enjoyed. C really looked forward to going to summer camp every day. In fact, on Fourth of July break, he asked if he was still going to go to summer camp on Monday. Now, C's going to the seventh grade. C and T really love Ms. T. Her daughter initials Ms. T. Ms. T definitely helps children. Ms. T has rules, and the children follow them. She has a loving way to accomplish that. Ms. T is a bubbly and happy person. We felt very comfortable leading C and T in her care for the summer. We also appreciate the opportunity Ms. T gave T, her daughter, being a summer camp counselor. She immediately made her a summer counselor. She was too old to really be in the program. What a fantastic kid she turned out to be. T loved going and helping with the children. Ms. T had enough staff to take care of needs for T. We have a one-on-one ratio this year with volunteers. Not one volunteer has anything less than a master's degree in the education field. I call that a blessing. T has seizures, and had one while at camp in the swimming pool. But we had a registered nurse, we all been trained in CPR. It was so cool, it was like it wasn't happening. She had a seizure for three minutes. That's a long time for a seizure. Nothing was out of place, it was taken care of professionally. We called her up, we called the mother, and said, this is what happened, this is what we did, what more do you want us to do? She said, that's more than what they do at the hospital. I'm going to leave her there. She spent the rest of the day there and was fine. Ms. T takes care of the children. They are her number one priority. Great job, Ms. T. The R family loves you. Thank you again for the opportunity given to C and T. Now, this was the letter I got this afternoon when I was getting ready to leave, but I want to tell you that this program that we've got going on is such a wonderful program. I think that we can do it in every one of our schools. I think that it's time that we said, we're going to help our kids with reading below level. Nobody would have thought that these kids, I've got four kids that's got ADHD. They are doing so well with the robotics. That's why the guy who's teaching robotics said, I'm going to do it for an extra day. He's charging me nine to nine. Thank you so very much, have a good evening.
Do you have any other comments?
I move away adjourned to the second session.
Second.